I do have a note, this meeting is being livestreamed on my screen.
Okay.
Okay, good, all right. Okay, let's start then. My clock says it's three fifty-nine about to become four, so. Away we go, so we'll bring the meeting to order. Welcome back after a nice summer break. I hope everybody had a nice time. Sounds like everybody was traveling this summer. Very nice. So we call the meeting to order. I'll read the land acknowledgement. We respectfully acknowledge that the County of Halliburton is located on Treaty Twenty, Michisagui territory, and in the traditional territory of the Michisagui and Chipewa nations, collectively known as the Williams Treaties First Nations, which are Kerbal, Rama, Hiawatha, Alderville, Skugog Island, Bosa Lake, and Georgina Island First Nations. We acknowledge the shared presence of indigenous nations throughout the area and recognize its original indigenous inhabitants as the stewards of its land. Could I have a motion to adopt the agenda, please? Unless you don't want to. Jen? Jackie? And? Paul? How's that? Or somebody else has their name up that I didn't see. Okay, Paul, you're in. All in favor? Carrie? Any reparations to the conflict of interest? Seeing none, we'll go to the consent agenda. Consent agenda consists of the-
Everyone?
Public Library Board, eleventh of June minutes. Sorry, on the circulation statistics for September-
Either you guys are very quiet or I can't hear anything.
Oh. Can you hear me? Can you hear me, Cease?
Cease, can you not hear any of us? No, nothing?
Is your volume, are you connected to your mic?
I'll text him. David, if you want to keep going, I'll just text him.
Okay.
No, no, you can, you can untext that.
Okay.
One should turn one, one should turn one speakers on when they're going to a meeting.
Yeah, good, good.
That usually works, doesn't it, Cease? Welcome anyway. No questions on the consent agenda. Could I have a motion to move the consent agenda, please? Moved by Jen? Seconded by Cease. Okay, we're going to go over now to the financial reports. For that, you will have received the financial reports in the agenda package. I'll turn it over to Andrea to take it through though.
Oh, that's correct. So we have this one thing to note in user charges and donations and other, right there in the revenue. I think that some of the friends checks are actually, they've gone into the user charges instead of separated for the friends. Some of that money, so it's showing that the maybe lower than we expect, but some of that money is showing up in that line instead. Down in the training section, we actually have two separate lines for training. One is registration and one is other. We put the bulk of the, well, not the bulk, the ten thousand dollars for training this year just in one. But we've just been using the two codes to put like the food in that, in the registration in one and registration for courses and that type of thing on the other. So they both are training, so that's why in line zero one five zero two, it has three thousand seven hundred and twenty-seven dollars. And then in training other is five hundred and sixty. The total is ten thousand for training, so I just wanted to mention that's why it's all training.
Cease, have you got your hand up? Do I see your hand up? No? Okay, thanks, good. Paul, I do have a question on beyond that, the user charges versus donations. I think that's what you're referring to. Does that mean that it's a bring forward that has to be amended?
It's still, it's still revenue coming in. So we send, we send the check to the county and then they deposit it and it's just sometimes it goes in one line instead of the other, so it's still coming to us. Yeah, I need to record it. And then I think that that's, that's all I needed to flag for this time.
Let's see if there's any questions. Any questions from the board? On the financial report? Okay, seeing none, then may have a mover and seconder to set the financial report moved by. Adele, thank you, and seconded by Paul, thank you. The next item is the facilities report. You should have a copy.
Me, yeah. Okay, so this is our twenty twenty-five facilities report, so it goes over everything that has been done and still needs to be done from this time last year till now, so up until September fourth of this year. Lots of small different things that's happened across the municipalities this year at our branches, so just a huge thank you to all the municipal staff that help us maintain and improve our branches throughout the year. The second section is just outstanding facility issues. So these are issues that are in the works that I've been working with our colleagues in the municipalities to get done, but just are still, still in the works. Notably, we got the sidewalk redone last year and we're still waiting to get some of the landscaping done, just to fix some of the dripping hazards along the way, so that's in the works as well. The, oh, and then we are also working with Minden Hills staff. This year, the library sign and the cultural center sign had to come down due to damage, so they are working on sourcing replacement signs. So that happened this year and we're just still waiting for, for news on that. And the last section is projected facility reports, so just items that we project over the next one to three years based on observations of wear and tear. Just two things I wanted to point out from the report. One is we are going to start looking at removing the flexible glass barriers that are at the circulation desks. There still exist in Little Forest branch, Dyser branch, and the Minden Hills branch. And this is just for accessibility reasons, it's hard to hear and they're not as used as they, they were when they were put up during COVID, so we are going to be working with maintenance personnel in each municipality to try to get that done in the next year. And then the second item I wanted to point out is we are hoping to look into some wayfinding signage for our Dorset branch. We just opened about a year ago now and we just haven't gotten a chance to do the signage inside to help people find their way down into the basement. And it has been some feedback we've received so far, so that's an item we're looking to.
Thank you. Any questions? Jen, Jackie, sorry?
It seems like there's an awful lot of things that need to be done, like a new roof in Minden this toilet that needs fixing for the past four years and stuff like that. Is this looked after by the municipality?
Yeah.
So this is not part of the life of our budget?
Municipalities own all our buildings, so they maintain them for us.
Okay, so.
And you're right, the Minden, the Minion building has been in a state of pretty disrepair for a long time. So we hope that they will get at it this year.
Okay, so we have no control over what gets done when?
The more, we have, I have a motion here that's going to accept the facilities report and send it to all the CEOs, CAOs of each municipality. So that's our, how we get it to them.
Okay.
We, we ask our staff to look at the facility and see what they think needs to be done. They record it, that's it, that's what you're got now. And that goes to the CAOs and it's up to them to put it into their work programs to do the work.
So they will have seen some of these things over and over again?
Oh, yeah, yeah. But, but they have to get a report from us formally to make the move.
Okay. So we don't need to request repairs for each individual item? Will all be in this report?
Yeah, this report goes to them, so.
Okay, got it.
The Minden CAO will get the copy of that report and hopefully do something with it rather than put it on the shelf.
Yeah, there's a ton of stuff.
Okay, any, Jen, go ahead.
Yeah, I just wonder, is there, could, could we maybe pen? Or does it already happen, an individual cover letter to each CEO to just pull out? You know, here are the things in, in the report that particularly pertain to you.
That's a good idea. Yeah, we can do that. Or do we do that already?
It's done both ways. In some years, I think the report has just been forwarded to all CAOs and other times it's been, the sections have been copied and pasted and sent to the CAO of each municipality, like the things, say, for Algonquin Highlands or for Highlands East. I can't, if that's your preference to do it that way, I can.
I think that would be, I think that's a great idea. It allows them to focus on what they have to do directly rather than read the whole report.
That'd be great.
Adele, you had your hand up? Go ahead.
I did. I noticed the line about Dorset and the dehumidifier and having been there last week doing a program, it had never, it had never really crossed my mind that that building is not air conditioned. And when I arrived in the building or in the library that day to do my program, it was quite warm, so it seems that there's there may be two issues there. One is the humidity and the other is the temperature. So I'm wondering if, if it would be an idea to request of Algonquin Highlands a portable air conditioner, floor air conditioner to be placed in that room. It would be less than a thousand dollars, I think.
Jen can probably answer that for you right now. Go ahead, Jen.
Yeah, that's a, that's a really good idea. I think, given the nature of the room, it's quite distinct from the other rooms in terms of the, you know, stockpile of, of books that should probably be maintained at a certain humidity and temperature level, so that's, that's a good idea. In the long term, we are seeking right now funding for AC for the entire building, but that might, that's not going to be any, that's not going to be fast. That's quite a, a big expense, so we're, we're looking for grants. So longer term, hopefully there's a solution, but I, I don't mind that idea at all of asking for, you know, for just a room, a room AC for, for the library, given the nature of the room.
Okay, we'll add that to the facilities report that goes to Algonquin Highlands, okay? All right. I have no, no other questions. I don't see any hands up. I have a motion being resolved as the Halliburton County Public Library Board approves, or Halliburton County Library Board approved the twenty twenty-five facilities report and that the library board directs the CEO deep librarian to provide the facilities report to all four municipal CAOs. Mover, please? Moved by Paul? Seconded by Jen, thank you. All in favor? Carrie? All right, now we're going to go and talk about Dorset a little bit. We did a, after a year, we've done a kind of a report on the Dorset branch. I was hoping, I think the board asked for this information, didn't they, at our, some meeting ago? And within the agenda, it's a very good report, very detailed report. And I think we have, and, and the staff rightfully so. It's looking for some direction from the board as to what to do with the finding, so I will turn it over to Andrea.
No worries.
You know what I'm going to ask you to do in the future meetings is when you put an item called Dorset Branch hours, feedback, dad, Hillary. Thank you. All yours.
Thank you. Okay, so yes, as you may remember, that was quite requested to do a survey to get some input, a better opening hours and see how it is working with our Dorset patrons. So we did a survey. It went out from June twelfth to July first. We did paper copies. We also did a digital copy. And we advertised it, took some posters in some key community locations in the area as well. We were looking to see whether the current hours meet their, our patrons' needs and if potentially we were to change hours, what hours might they like? So this report shows the results of that survey, also discusses about our circulation statistics and our walk-in traffic to date, so we have about a year of statistics for that. So for the survey, we got around forty-one, we got forty-one responses. Most of them, twenty-nine, were full-time residents of Halliburton County. The rest were a combination of seasonal and part-time residents. When asked if the current hours meet their needs, it was split with, with most people leaning towards the no or the maybe category. We also asked if hypothetically, if we were to be open in the evenings, two to seven, would people use it? Overwhelmingly, people did say yes, they would, with twenty-five people saying yes and twelve people saying maybe. Only four people said they wouldn't use evening hours. And we then looked and asked our patrons what days they would prefer or that they prefer visiting the branch. This was evenly split pretty much across all, all days, Tuesday to Saturday. And then we looked at hours to see if there was any specific hours people would use the library. Again, this was pretty evenly split, but there was definitely some notable connections with people wanting those evening hours again. With a lot of responses for those, that two to seven range. So some just trends from that was people are happy with the hours, but they would like an evening hour to be able to use after work and after school based on the comments and the feedback. Our walk-in traffic for the year supports this as well. Our busiest day for walk-in is on Saturdays and notably this is drawn by special events in the area, including the Dorset winter carnival and also the arts and crafts show, which bring in a lot of people to the branch. And then the walk-in for Wednesday and Friday is quite evenly split with a little bit more on Wednesdays. Our circulation trends, we have most of our circulation, which happens Wednesdays and Fridays, and particularly happens mostly in the evenings. Or sorry, in the afternoons, twelve to three. And then on Saturdays, if people are coming in and checking out books, they tend to come in in the morning around ten to twelve. So that's kind of all the feedback that we gathered to get a, some recommendations and some options for you. We also had to consider the hours of the Dorset Rec Center because we can only be open when the rec center is open. So that is, they are open till nine on weekdays, so it gives us lots of flexibility. But Saturdays, they are only open till four, so we're unable to have an evening shift on Saturdays. Also, Dorset branch is single-staffed, so we can't have it open more than five hours. If so, we would have to provide a thirty-minute lunch break for our staff, which would mean changing the schedule to accommodate even closing for a half hour in the middle or we're changing the shift. So with that in mind, we did approximate costs for if we, if the board would like to add hours. So in the report on page four, you'll see what the approximate annual cost would be if we were to add one hour a week, two hour a week, and three hours a week, which ranges from about just over two thousand dollars to just over six thousand dollars. So for the board, we brought towards three different options that we would like your opinion on to so that we can move forward in planning. So option A would be no changes to the weekly Dorset branch opening hour, so we just maintain what we have. Option B, we would increase the number of hours, so Dorset branch would remain open the fourteen hours a week, but we would look into adjusting when those hours fall to try to find something in an evening. If we went with option B, we do request that the library board form a subcommittee to work with library staff so that we can try to figure out the best way to, to spread those fourteen hours out. And then our last option, option C, would be to increase the number of hours from fourteen hours to increase it by a couple hours to be able to better serve our Dorset residents. And then noting that obviously this option would have budgetary implications, so that it would then be determined by the budgets season as well. So the last page just has some additional feedback. We had lots of great positive feedback that came from this survey that wasn't just about our opening hours, so a lot of people were thrilled that the library is open again indoors it and in the rec center and a lot of positive feedback for the library programming that is currently going on, so it was great to collect that as well. I'd love to turn it over for some feedback and questions.
Bet you Jen's got a question.
Yeah, I see. Yeah, thanks. This is, this is really informative. Thank you. Question is, is it possible to disaggregate some of the data, for example, to find out of the people who said that, of the seventeen people who said that the Dorset branch does not have opening hours that meet their needs? What were their responses with regards to when it would be avail, supportive for them? For example, did they all say Saturday, for example? Because, or, and, and similar disaggregation question, can we disaggregate answers according to seasonal versus permanent? Because I wonder if there are some permanent folk who are retired, they're around all the time. Basically, they can come in whenever, but the seasonal folk are really specific about, about their days. So, you know, can we break it down any further?
Yes, we can. Yeah, so we gave like an overview of what the feedback was, but we do still have all the statistics and we can look through line by line of how, what people said. Yeah.
Do you have any recollection that, you know, were there any big trends there that you can recall?
Yeah, overall, people wanted the evening hours no matter where they, they fell, and if they were satisfied with the hours, majority of them noted that while they use it during the day because they were retired, that they do see the benefit of an evening hour for their neighbors or for, for other people in the community and still would, would like to see that, even though they're not the ones that would use.
Okay.
Is that, would that be option B? Essentially?
Yeah.
Pull around the hours that are there and see if we could squeeze a few more evening hours?
Yeah, so be looking at those, those weekdays. We're open two weekdays, so looking at those hours and seeing how we can reconfigure to have a one evening a week open.
Okay. Any other questions, Jen?
Well, no, I guess I'm, I'm kind of tempted to, I hate deferring stuff, but I'm, I'm kind of tempted to see some more disaggregated information, just to to fine tooth it a little. Because, you know, there are a lot of, of equally spread responses that might seem more informative if they were a bit more disaggregated.
Yeah, Paul?
My suspicion would be that there's a marked difference between the seasonal residents' responses and the permanent residents, but that would require then a schedule for the summer and a different schedule for the winter, which is possible, and maybe it, it provides greater services to a greater number for that time of the year, so maybe, I hate to say this, but if we defer a decision based on a little more thinking, uh, compared to the numbers?
I think that's where Jen's coming from.
Yeah.
And I think that's a great idea, Jen. To dig a little deeper before you make the decision. Couple of hands up. Jackie, was yours up?
No.
Okay. Adele?
Yes, and I'm wondering if in deferring it pending more data, we look at actually increasing the number of hours at the Dorset branch. What I'm seeing is, is the township of Algonquin Highlands has, has twenty-six hours of service. Much less than any of the other townships, so my question would, would be if we're going to study the data even more is if we were going to increase, if we wished to increase service in Algonquin Highlands by, say, three or four hours, what would the staff, where would the staff like to see those hours go? Like if you had, if you had one four-hour shift that you'd like to create, where would you like that to go?
Where, do you mean where as in which day of the week in Dorset or where, which location of, like which branch location or?
Well, I think, I think that, I think both those questions are something to consider, but I, I think, I really think that we as a board, sorry, I think that I would like to see the county providing a little more service in Algonquin Highlands, and that of course would mean an increase in that portion of the budget.
Yeah. Okay, well, that, that may be a piece of work that we want to do as far as digging a little deeper into the numbers. If you might, something like that. I think Adele, what you're saying is you're looking at option C, which is increase the number of weekly open hours. The better.
Definitely, yes. I mean, that's not to say that it's, that the county will be able to provide that, but I, I think we should ask, and I think it sounds like the township of Algonquin Highlands needs more hours of service.
Okay. So we, I think we're going to, I think the general consensus is we'll defer this for that other information, which would include your, your thoughts, Adele, at the same time. Cease, do you have your hand up?
Yeah, I was going to suggest that when we're, we're talking about the, the total cost here, so an hour per week, I'm going to assume for the sake of argument that's twenty-one hundred dollars a year, not twenty-one hundred dollars a week. So, so we're talking about raising it two thousand dollars. What's our current annual budget? My point is, this works out to the square root of nothing when you put it into a decimal point in terms of percentages. So I, I think if we want to, to, to look at the differential, which is obviously quite a bit different, you know, entertaining the thought of adding at least one, maybe two hours to, to, whether it goes to Dorset or whether one goes to Dorset and one goes to, to Sandhoe, to me, it, it's just a it's, it's where we are. People, people are now starting to come up and, and, and take a greater part, so I don't see why we wouldn't entertain, if you want twenty hours, we'll hold that, that, that's kind of a totally different kettle of fish, but one or two hours to me is, is not an unreasonable ask.
Yeah. So Jen, go ahead.
Yeah, so that, that's a good point too, Cease. I think, just to clarify my, my interest on disaggregation, because I, I hate to not be clear and then it comes back and then, just, so just to clarify, I would love to see the same responses of what would work and what hours and what days, et cetera, broken down according to permanent versus seasonal and separate, separate graph. Do the current opening hours of the Dorset branch meet your needs? Yes or no? That disaggregation too, so the ones who said yes, or the one, in particular, the ones who said no, what were their answers to the preferred questions? And then seasonal versus permanent as well, so two separate graphs of information disaggregated in that way. That would be really helpful, with hopes, great hopes that there's a, a strong overlap between those two graphs.
Okay, well, let's, let's start there. And then we'll also swing in Adele's thoughts. Andrea has her hand up.
I think the, the, the one reason why we framed it as possible option A, B, or C is because there is the budgetary implication. And so we will talk today about the budget. But we would need direction from you if we are going to then add three hours of staff time that will definitely impact the budget and that, I guess, if we defer, if we aggregate the data and present it to you in October, it's just, I'm not sure how that will land with us putting forward the budget and the timing for that.
But I, that's where, if I, if you don't mind, Dave, that's where I think Adele's point is really well received. Let's assume it's in addition to the budget so that you've got the go-ahead with the, you know, with budgeting. And in the meanwhile, we sort out, okay, but when and where would they be? And that's the, that's a separate conversation, but in the meanwhile, should the board agree, you'd have your direction with regards to which option?
Yep.
So Adele's option would be option C, I think?
Yes.
Whether it's one hour, two hours, or three hours that would get added to the budget.
I'm suggesting four hours. And while I'm picking that out of a hat a bit, what that ends up being is fifty percent of the hours that the two biggest townships get. I think that's what it is. Yes, Dyser and Minden Hills get sixty branch assistant hours per week. I'm proposing the township of Algonquin Highlands add four hours so that they get thirty hours a week.
Okay. You want to make that as a motion?
Well, I, I, I would think that that could be fit into the budget and perhaps not require a separate motion.
Let's ask Andrea this question. If we, if we defer this to deal with the, the item of additional four hours, as Adele says, which would largely resolve the points that Jen made, but let's, we'll do Jen's work because I think her point about seasonal or full-time is really important, and Paul raised it as well. So if we, if we adjourn the budget or defer the, the decision on this, or say a month- or say a month till our next meeting, does that impact your budget timing to get the information into the county in order to get the budget?
I think it'd definitely be preferable if we made a decision, if it is four hour. Like, we can certainly wait on figuring out where and when the four hours would go. But it would be helpful for me to take away from this meeting if you want those four hours added to our ask.
Okay, that's, that answers that question. Paul?
One further thing to fur- uh, to add more cloudiness to the issue. And I'm just curious, the uh sixty hours for the two larger townships and then uh fifty one, forty-five for uh for Highlands East. Um, what are the proportions of population in the various townships? So that is, um, Algonquin Highlands again, we're taking their appropriate percentage? I I'll just throw that out. I I'm not really excited about it. But um, it it probably would bear uh some scrutiny later on. It's it's well worth looking at that as well, so it's not disproportionate to anybody.
We have to make, uh, according to Andrea, we have to make the decision today so that she can get the number into the county for the budget. Waiting a month is not gonna work, according to Andrea, so we have to make that decision today. If you wanna do four hours, the cost would be eight thousand five hundred dollars or something like that you would take. Um, are you prepared to put that additional money? And the reason I picked that number is because if one day is twenty-one hundred and two days is forty-two hundred, three days is sixty-three hundred, add twenty-one to sixty-three, and you'll get about eighty-four, eighty-five. If that's the number you want to put in the budget, now I have a motion that says we have, we have, we direct the staff to do with, to deal with options, and I'll just put option C, which is add four hours to the budget, and away you go. That would be the motion right now, if you're interested in doing it, okay? So let me read the motion as I have just said it. Be it resolved at the Halliburton County Library Board accepts the Dorset branch open uh hours survey results plus next steps for information. And furthermore directs the staff to proceed with option C, as outlined in the report. And the the motion is, goes on, if option C is chosen, library board direct staff to increase the number of weekly operational hours at the Dorset branch by uh four hours and incorporate the associated cost into the twenty-twenty-six Halliburton County Public Library budget. So, option C would now become something to the back for me quickly in the eight thousand, I can say five hundred do- five hundred dollars. So that would be the motion on the table right now. Everybody okay with that motion coming on the table right now? Paul says yes, Jen says yes, Adele says yes, Cease, just a second. Cease, you okay with that?
I just wanna make sure that that we don't, I I have no problem with the four hours, if that's what we're gonna go for. But what we're basically saying is that we're recommending it all goes to Dyser, it all goes to Dorset. And uh, you know, it it may work out, it should be two and two. I I'm just saying, as long as we don't paralyze ourselves from making good decisions.
Yeah. Well, to get, to get four hours to pass to.
Eight thousand five hundred and twenty-eight dollars.
Oh, option, option three becomes eight thousand five hundred and twenty-eight dollars. Right. That's what we're gonna vote on right now, and then, and it would all go into Dorset. Cease? That's what we're voting on. It wouldn't go to any other branch in any other community. Adele?
I I I hear what Cease is saying, and I'm wondering if the motion could be amended to say four hours in either or in either or Dorset or Stanhope branches.
Okay.
To be allocated to those branches. I don't know the exact wording. Perhaps the staff would be best to decide.
I'll defer to Jen to comment on that. Jen, go ahead.
Um, my only concern there is that the information that we have today and that we will be receiving at next board meeting does not include information that would help us determine between the two. Like, we haven't done the same study for Stanhope. We've only done this survey for Dorset. So, I'm not sure the basis on which we would differentiate.
But I think this one would apply solely to Dorset, given the fact that the data we're dealing with is Dorset-based. And don't forget, Dorset is is new. This year, we tested the hours and we, this is, we asked citizens to comment on the hours and they commented. And now they're expecting us to come back with a decision, so let's put it on the table for a vote, okay? So the motion will be, be it resolved at the Halliburton, so first of all, we will amend the possible option C will will now be um, eight thousand five hundred and twenty-eight dollars. And the motion will be, be it resolved that the Halliburton County Public Library Board accepts the Dorset branch open hour survey results plus next steps or information. And furthermore, rest staff to proceed with option C as 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 outlined, as amended in the report. Okay? Then it's going to be, if option C is chosen, library board direct staff to increase the number of weekly operational hours at Dorset branch by four hours and incorporate the associated cost into the twenty-twenty-six Halliburton County Public Library budget. Any further questions? Can I have a mover, please?
I'll move.
Moved by Adele, seconded by Jackie. Thank you, Jackie. All in favor? Carry it. Very well done. Thank you very much, everybody. Now, that brings us to the, you know, in places. Let's look at that. And this budget we're gonna look at now will be amended by the amount of money that, eight thousand five hundred and twenty-eight dollars, somewhere in here. I'm not sure where it is.
Uh, yeah, that will be amended under the wage line.
Okay.
Um, so the purpose uh of this being on the agenda today is to get your feedback um, about where things are at, um, the the draft numbers that we have so far for the twenty-twenty-six budget. Um, so uh, we can go through, if everyone has the document open, we can go through the twenty-twenty-six uh budget column uh towards the right side. Uh, for comparison, we have the um budget and actual numbers for twenty-twenty-two, twenty-twenty-three, twenty-twenty-four, and the budget for twenty-twenty-five. Uh, as well to the right, the twenty-twenty-six budget that we're discussing, we have the percentage change from twenty-twenty-five and then the dollar change from twenty-twenty-five. So, uh, like, get your feedback uh in terms of the, so we'll leave the tax requisition request for the time being, because we know um we're gonna be adding money to it and we'll talk about that later when we get to the wages line uh in the expenses. We don't anticipate any change to provincial funding. It's been the same for many, many years and uh we haven't been advised to expect any um, you'll see no change in what we're expecting uh in terms of uh fees, by uh payments to the library, contributions from others. Um, I've tried to flag in yellow the things that are still to be confirmed. So, uh, one of the to be to be confirmed items is how much we might wanna transfer from reserves for the twenty-twenty-five, or sorry, twenty-twenty-six budget. Um, this most often goes to our uh uh IT uh replacement equipment. We put money in there every year. Um, uh, yeah, so if you've uh flipped to the.
Uh, I have a question.
Yeah.
It's on, under um expenses.
Yeah.
Okay, so with the items that's uh under wages, you show a twelve percent increase in the cost of wages in twenty-twenty-five, correct?
Uh, so, uh, yeah, in the column to the right, it is showing a twelve percent increase in wages
Okay.
from the twenty-twenty-five to twenty-twenty-six. And please keep in mind, that's not including the additional ask that we just discussed.
Okay, that's that's leave the ask separate for now.
So, the uh, in terms of that twelve percent, the three point five percent is the COLA increase. That is um for all employees all across the county. Um, that also includes all of the step increases for staff who, um, especially have their forms reviewing are doing well. Um, and you'll also note that um there's a difference in actually the calculation in that section for staff wages. So, um, you'll also see in the sick line, in twenty-twenty-five, there is uh twenty-one thousand four hundred and eighty-eight dollars. Uh, the finance department um made a change in how the wages line was calculated for this year. So, the um, uh, for part-time staff, the uh two sick days per year and two personal emergency leave days per year are no longer separated out into uh the sick line. Those hours are being actually added to the wages line. So, those are the three uh separate reasons for why um that percentage is showing as a uh as an increase.
Yeah, that's why I ask. So, it's safe to say that th- these increases, COLA, uh pay increases based on step increases as a result of performance appraisal, and those traditional things that drive the cost of the wages are universal. It's not the library just, I mean, that's our, that's what it costs us, but it's cost of everybody.
Yeah, for the COLA step increases.
In the whole county.
Oh, and it's a a difference in the way that the part-time sick uh and P E L days have been calculated here in in our budget.
Okay, that's good. And that would also apply to the lineup about benefits. The eleven percented benefits.
Eleven, eleven percent benefits, uh, I assume is also for all counties. So, that's, uh, figure that the finance department, um.
So, why would the benefits increase? Is that contractual? Okay, so the reason I'm asking these questions, because it, you know, if you look at this, you jump out and say, wow, twelve percent, that's a lot. But there's a very logical, well-documented historic reason for these annual increases. It doesn't reflect on us making a grab for for more money. It's across the whole county.
Yeah, it's it's just the the difference in how the
Yeah.
part-time hours are in a different, uh, they're showing up in a different.
Okay, and the decision we've just made with respect to the four additional hours at Dorset will further impact this.
Exactly.
And that is solely on us. It's not on anybody else in the county. It's just us.
That's the, the board here today has requested.
Okay. I don't think I have any other questions on the budget.
I have a question. Under the statutory holiday, why is there, why is it zero for this year?
Um, I believe that the those, um, the part-time amounts are showing up in the wages line. I actually have, I um have the email, uh, that I received from uh the finance department. So, uh, well, actually, that's about the part-time sick days. So, they've allocated those days, um, they've been removed from the library cost under premiums and allocated to wages. Um, so, but actually, that doesn't speak directly to the, I think it's all put in wages. Because you can see that in this table, or yeah, it's not appearing in there, so.
Yeah, so all these things have been piled into wages.
Yeah.
Okay, so when we submit this, we, uh, uh, and we have to make that point clear that so that they, I'm sure they understand, but just so we don't get into another situation like we did last year, where people are pointing out and saying, you've got an exorbitant increase.
Yeah, because it's only twelve percent, because all this other stuff is added in there.
Exactly, exactly. And, you know, if they're gonna give everybody COLA, we get our share of it. And if people are gonna get promotion, not promotions, but step increases because of performance, there's a cost to that. And that's all part of of uh human resources management, isn't it? Okay. Any other questions? Okay, I have a motion. Um, a motion.
Oh, I'm sorry, I do have a question.
You, you asked your question while I find my missing motion.
Okay, um, are, I I don't see any um money in here regarding uh the student job grants. Are you going to be applying for those in the coming year? I see we haven't done it for the last few years because of just um not having the resources to manage students. I think that was why in previous years.
Wait.
Uh, yeah, it's exactly that. The uh, the student grants take um a lot of time. It takes a lot of time to manage the student to apply for the grant, follow up on the grant, and manage the student. Um, we haven't had uh capacity for that, and we will not, uh, we have a maternity leave coming up, and we will not have capacity for that uh this year, obviously.
Okay, and I understand, I figured, finally realized why we don't have a motion. This is just us giving direction to the staff to prepare the budget.
Yeah.
As we discussed. Okay, can we move on? Okay, thank you all very much. That was excellent. We're gonna go into camera now. And there's a motion that I need to go into camera. It's a long motion. I'll read it, but we're going in camera, okay? And we have to explain why we're going in camera. Be it resolved pursuant to the Public Libraries Act R S O nineteen ninety C P four four, section sixteen point one, the Halliburton County Library Board enters into a closed session for the following reasons. A is the security of property of the board, personal matters about an identified individual, a proposed pending acquisition or disposition disposition of land by the board, labor relations or employee negotiations, litigation of potential or potential litigation, including matters before administrative tribunals affecting the board. Advice is subject to some financial privilege included communications necessary for that purpose. And a matter in respect to which a board or committee of a board may hold a closed meeting under another act, twenty twenty-two, chapter seventeen, schedule C, section twenty-four, subsection five. Ah, after saying all that, we're going in camera. Jen?
Sorry, I have a question there. I believe, if I'm not mistaken, those are all the possible reasons for going into camera.
Yes.
Are we not going to identify which reason? I thought that's the point.
The reason B, personal matters about an unidentified individual.
So, I wonder if we might, I I don't know if it's too late, I guess it is, to amend the agenda. But I think the point of that section of the agenda is to explain why we're going in, not to give all the reasons why we could be going.
Absolutely, you're absolutely right. I agree. But I have a motion in front of me that I wanted to read. So, I'm gonna reread the motion. Be it resolved pursuant to the Public Libraries Act R S O nineteen ninety, uh, C P forty-four, section sixteen point one, the Halliburton County Library Board enters into a closed session for the following reason. Personal matters about an identifiable individual. Could I have a mover and seconder, please? Moved by Jen, seconded by Adele. Thank you very much. And Jen, you're absolutely right. All in favor? Motion carried. Okay. See you guys. We'll see you guys later.
Are you guys?
Almost done, Cease.
I'm going to be in deep trouble, but that's.
Thanks for hanging in.
There's only adjournment law?
Yeah. As soon as they come on.
If I leave, it's over anyway.
It is, but if you could just give us ten more seconds so that we've got quorum for adjournment, that would be awesome.
We'll do that.
I think we're all back. We can't hear the room.
The room is on mute.
Room's, yeah. There you are.
Is there anyone now?
Yeah.
Okay, having motion moved by Paul, seconded by Adele. Be it resolved that December tenth, twenty twenty five, regular meeting with Hellberg County Library Board now adjourned. Any question?
Nope.
All your favorite. Thank you very much, everybody. See you at the next meeting.
Bye, thanks.
Thank you.
Okay, boy.